Okay, good evening. We're welcome to the Monday, March 2nd, Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. Looks like we got everybody's here. Did want to say thank you to Officer Norman with Harrisburg Elementary School for being here with us tonight. Thank you very much. And with that, I do, we did have one change to the agenda. 4.02, which was going to be a consent item, not going to take any action on it today. We can't have some discussion if there's a member that wants to have discussion on it, but it won't be an action item. So with that, I'd like to, again, we called the meeting order to have a motion for the agenda, to adopt the agenda. You have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Nope. Alright, so moving on to 3.01 is our quarterly forecast. So Dr. Lauter, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mr. Walters. So I passed out, I think every board member has a copy of the quarterly forecast. Again, the intent of that is just to give you an idea of what's coming up over the next three months, and also if you see something that's missing, or you would really like to have something, and want to try to fit that in, and that's the intent. So you can see for April, there's not a whole lot of things on any of these three months that are really massively different. But again, April, budget amendments, construction updates, adopt our budget policy, we'll do Teacher of the Year, we have a teacher fair, and we'll do the retirement banquet, and then we'll have an art spotlight. We've been doing department spotlights. The board has essentially said they like to continue that. In May, budget amendments, construction policy, Title I plan has to be approved each year, the MOA with Rowan Cabarrus, the fees that come up each year, pricing for school nutrition, and then the contracts for instructional resources. And then in June, again, budget amendments, the continuing resolution to move us forward, construction updates, policy, the computer leases, CTE plan, which also has to be adopted each year, and then the alternative accountability model. Those are all things that require board passing and signing off on. So anything up there that you guys need clarification on, something you want to add or make sure that we put forward in the next quarter?
Anything from our board members? David?
Just a quick question. Can you ask staff, please, to prep us about the alternative accountability model? I'd like some good background that would help me understand what we're doing in June.
Yeah, it actually, we've passed that the last, they started requiring that four or five years ago, so it's just the alternative schools. So the Glenn Center, the state actually gives you three or four different ways you can kind of choose to hold your alternative schools, quote, accountable. And so we've pretty much stuck with the same one, but we'll bring that forward and try to send you a little bit of a, we'll get Mr. Fayle, who handles that, to send a little narrative on that, so you'll know what it is.
Do we have to take any action on our restart schools?
No. If we, the state is actually in the process of possibly changing what we have to do for restart, so if we get a big change for that, we will. But right now, they're actually looking at that, so we're not sure if they're going to make a change on it or not.
Okay. Anything else on our quarterly forecast? If not...
I had one thing. Dr. Lauter, we, I think in the agenda review, we talked a little bit about possibly either a weekly report update on head injuries and...
Oh, yes, yes.
Concussion protocols. I didn't know if that was something that we would want to bring up, but, you know, I was wanting to see the statistics, because, you know, we started this adventure with this head trauma and all, back in about 13 or 14, and I wanted to see if it was starting to level out, and we're actually not seeing the types of reports, because, you know, we went through a long spike period as we identified and trained people on how to identify these head traumas, but I wanted to see if we were starting to make...
Yeah, I should have probably followed up back with you on that. So the hospital actually tracks that information, so Mr. Tyson, I know he copied me on the emails, has asked Mr. Behringer just to put that in a format to send to you guys, so we'll probably just email it to you, and then if you want to follow up for that, we'll be glad to put it on there.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, last call for quarterly forecast? Alright, we'll...
Alright, thanks, sir.
Move on to 3.02. Ms. Kelly Klutz will give us an update on our budget process.
Alright. Good evening, and welcome to budget season. Sometimes I call it March Madness. Here we go. So we're going to start with our budget presentation. So the meeting schedule is before you. Today, Monday, March 2nd, we're going to review budget process, capital outlay non-facilities, capital outlay facilities, and then our CIP, our 10-year plan. On Thursday, March 26th, we are scheduled for the next budget meeting, but there's an agenda item on today where we're going to discuss that day, so that day could change, possibly. Then the public hearing and the budget, more budget discussion is going to happen on April 6th. And then finally, we will adopt a proposed budget on April 20th, and that will allow us to send our budget to the county. Okay? So the next slide is just, we're discussing and defining the budget committee, what their roles and responsibilities are. Just take a, and pull out a little bit there, that the budget committee, our intent is to align with the strategic plan of the school system, and the strategic plan, there's a link there on the bottom. So everything that we do in the budget committee, the idea is to align with our goals and objectives and follow the strategic plan. Our committee members this year are as listed. We have board liaisons for Cabarrus County Schools, Board of Education. We have school representation, principals, and teachers, and teacher assistants. We have the cabinet listed, our leadership, part of our leadership team. The county, over to the right, Ms. Diane Henicutt has been to most of the meetings. Rodney Harris is the new deputy county manager. Susan Farrington, the finance director, and Lauren Tyera is the budget person for the county. And so we appreciate their input into our committee. And then bottom right, community and parent representation. We have some great community representation and parent representation with us this year. One of the things on the survey last year was that we expand that, so we've got an increased participation there. Also, we have an increased participation, tried to get an increased participation in the school level, too. So we're just a little bit bigger than we have been in the past. Okay? This slide is just a reminder of where you and the public can find the documents. So the budget committee meetings are always published on our website with all of the detail. We do have hard copies and books if you would like to come get one and take that home with you. Certainly welcome to do that, but all of these documents are online. In addition, we post the minutes to the meeting, so that you can have that. They're just talking about our budget process and our development and process, starting in the foundation of the pyramid. So the foundation is our schools and our school advisory teams, and so we get feedback from teachers, school improvement teams, staff, and parents. That information comes up to our budget subcommittees and administrative teams. Once that information is vetted there, it then comes to the budget committee, and that's where we're three-quarters of the way into our budget committee. We have one more meeting on Thursday that we'll finalize for. And then this information then goes to the superintendent. The superintendent then makes the recommendation to the board, and then, of course, the board has the final decision on the budget that submitted to then our county commissioners. We use a decision-making and prioritization tool called Kepner Trigo, and we've been using that for a significant amount of years. I'm sure Amy probably, at least five for sure.
2011.
2011, looky there. So at least nine years that we've been using it for, and it's a process that works well for us. Any questions on process or meeting schedule before we go forward into capital outlay? Okay. So we're going to, it's a summary of our capital outlay budget request, and so they're in different categories. We'll start at the top, on the left, our capital projects that are non-FMD, and FMD means Facilities Maintenance Department. And what we mean by non-FMD is any capital project that's not facilities-related. So these are other parts of the school business, but they're not specifically related to the buildings. And so an example of that that we'll see is an activity bus, or a piece of musical equipment, that type of thing. You can see that we've identified $1,039,300 worth of needs. Going to the next category, these are capital projects, and these are facilities-related, and these projects are in the category of $25,000 to $500,000. And so for the five-year period, we do projections for the county in five-year increments. That number is over $123 million that we've identified. For this current year, 2020, '21, or the coming year, we've identified sixty, over $61 million of needs. And because those lists are so huge, we did not list them in this PowerPoint presentation, but we did provide a link to you at the bottom of the document, that you can find all of the detail that backs up that $123,61. So the amount that we're going to focus on in that category is the 2020, '21 identified top 36 needs. It's over nearly $7 million, you can see there. The next category is our capital improvement projects. Those are greater than $500,000, and you can see the identified needs for 2021 is over $178 million. Then, of course, we have the capital improvement project's 10-year plan. This is the plan that the board approved in October of this past year, and that exceeds $291 million. Okay? We'll go to the next page. So first, we're going to talk about capital outlay non-facilities that we mentioned before. I'm going to give you a minute to take a look at the list. So the column with the blue, and it indicates points, that is the Trigo prioritization. You can see how they ended up in the rank through the Trigo process. So generally, in this category, we get $1,020,000 from the county. So you can see that we, following that same pattern, if nothing changes, we will get most of those items in the category. Once the budget is finalized, we can go in and make some minor adjustments, maybe to the amounts on one and two, or so that we can make sure that we get number nine, something like that. The board does have the authority and the ability to do that, and I expect that's probably what you might want to do. But for now, this is how the list came to it. Also, we're pretty good at saving dollars, combining our forces, using state contract prices, those type things, and getting really good prices. So there may just be some savings in there that will allow us to get further down that list. Are there any questions on that category? Yes?
I have several, but I'm sure that they must be in the details.
So that's in another part of the presentation, or for us to look at offline? Is that correct? So let me call your attention to that. Attached also in the, and Dane, if you want to flip over to the board docs, you can see there's the justification documents, and if you'll just pull one of those up, so that we can get a good look at that. Everything that we're discussing today has a justification document with that level of detail. You can also see where we've had previous year's requests, and so on this particular document, you can see that we requested it three years previous, how much we requested, whether we got funded or whether we did not. So there is a level of detail in those documents.
Thank you.
Sure. And do you have a specific question that we can research for you?
Well, because I haven't read all the, I'd rather not just throw it out, oh, I'm concerned about this.
Okay. So if you, after you've been able, had a chance to read them, if you have other questions, please let us know. We'll do our best to get those back to you. Okay? Anyone else? Any questions or concerns before we move on?
Any reason for nine and not 10 items?
So that's what came to the committee, right? So, you know, again, it's our pyramid, our foundation, so the schools made requests, the departments made requests, and we vetted everything, and this is the list that comes. There's not as many categories in non-facilities-related items. Most of our capital items are facilities.
I just wanted to make a note, too, that these items, not everyone, but some of them cover multiple schools. So when the schools each did their rankings and their requests rose up, they were the same things.
Yes.
So like the band instruments, the TV interactive panel replacements, the furniture fixtures, those were all multiple locations. So even though this is nine items, it may affect all 40 properties.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Also, another point to add is the $250,000, just for example, the furniture and the $250,000, we certainly do have more needs than $250,000 for furniture in this district. That's just a number that we've tried to identify and do a reoccurring amount, and so if we can get on a cycle and do a little bit each year, we're in a much better place. And if we put our total need up there, it would be millions of dollars. But this is the cycle that we've adopted for the district, and it's really worked quite well, probably, the last five years. And it's very similar with the TV and interactive panel replacements. We just, the needs just far outweigh the monies that would ever be available, so we try to do, put it on some type of replacement cycle.
So we had, we had some, pardon me.
Go ahead.
I beg your pardon, maybe we're talking about the same thing, but we had some animated discussions about, I believe it was the wireless microphone upgrades, and the regulatory environment that necessitates absolutely doing that thing. So when we have to ask the county for something that, in effect, doesn't need to be Trigoed because it's absolutely required, and it's a way of getting around it, is there any advantage to pulling off some items like that, that they're not negotiable? We have to ask the county for at least that amount, and then be able to reprioritize the list with things that are a true ask as opposed to a must-have? Am I making some sense?
Sure.
I want to condense that, but it seems like something like that has to be done, and therefore shouldn't be a request, so much as like, please find that, those funds from the county and help us stay within the regulatory requirements.
So these do have to be done, but there's this situation, and there's other situations in our district where we ask for the funding, and if we don't get it, we still have to make that work because of the regulatory, right? So there's all kinds of EC requirements, there's all kinds of, I mean, I can give you a list bigger than, you know, but we have to do it, right? So we have to go in and cut somewhere else. So the fact that it's on the list, it's within the dollars in which we anticipate getting funded, we're really in a good place right now. So that's not always the case with some of the things, but this particular one, I feel like we're in good shape. And so there's always the other component, so we can't use those anymore, any longer, beyond a certain point, but there's always, you know, find an alternate procedure or whatever. That's not ideal, that's not what we want to do, but we have to make choices, right? Cut something else, or find another way, those type of things.
There I am. Both, when we were talking about getting our fleet where we were kind of trying to maintain it, both of, we've talked about basically the McKinney-Vento vans and the activity buses. Both of those were in that category, basically trying to get it into a replacement-type situation. Was that not correct, Kelly?
Absolutely. We really, many of these items are replacement cycle-type things, and so five years ago, we were in a really difficult situation with our activity buses, where for at least 10 years, we had not gotten any funding for our activity buses, and so that fleet was, had some significant age on it. And we've done better over the last couple of years. We've been able to update some of the activity buses. I know our state rating has increased because of that, and now we just feel like if we can get two activity buses, two, three activity buses replaced a year, we'll be in a good place. Again, because the funding that usually comes in here is about $1,020,000, these replacement cycles work really well, because you can have a couple of activity buses, you can get a couple of McKinney-Vento vehicles, and if, as long as we keep on that same path, then we'll be in a good place.
Can I ask a question? I thought that once we purchased the McKinney-Ventos, because we didn't use yellow buses, that the state gave us the opportunity at that point to do replacements for those. Was that for them, or was there something else on these minivans? You need, I need clarification, because I'm a little misled on this.
So there's something else, right? So normally, we don't have the opportunity to use minivans, and so we asked the state specifically, because we were taking, you know, a 70-passenger van out to Charlotte or various places outside the county to pick up one or two kids, and that's very inefficient as far as cost. And so we asked the state very specifically if we could buy these vans, and if we could run these on the McKinney-Vento routes. And the state agreed to do that, and they agreed to put that in, so I can buy fuel for that one, I can buy parts for it, I can do those type of things out of the state transportation dollars. That's what you're thinking about, I believe, and that's not treated as a local vehicle. So it's part of the fleet, but it is not a part of the replacement cycle. And so when, yeah, so when we have put a yellow bus on, it then becomes a part of the replacement cycle, and then when that vehicle ages out, then the state replaces it. So we got a win that we didn't really expect to get, which really saves us a lot of money. We can pay the maintenance, but we didn't get the replacement cycle. It's still a win. It really is.
Right. So we got the expense side taken care of, we just didn't get the capital side.
We still have to have the capital.
Okay. So that's why, you know, as we approach these 100,000 miles, and we have to start turning these vehicles over, and I heard that I, from just a conversation I had the other day, I understand that our McKinney-Vento is close to 500 students? Or is it over, I know it's over 300.
425, I think, I'm wearing that in.
So it's up, from when we first started this adventure with these minivans, because it was less than, it was right at 300, I think, when we started this.
So the last year's number was 408?
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Introduce yourself real quick.
Hi, I'm John Bastelis, Director of Student Services, and I work with the McKinney-Vento program. So the question was, how many students, last year, the number was 408.
Right. Well, I was just paralleling is, over the past, the history is, we got these minivans probably 2013-ish, and we were around 300 or so at that time, and now we've increased to 400, so we actually need more vans, and now our vans are getting old, and we're having to go through replacement cycles, and the only other option is that the vans begin to break down, is to use yellow buses, I assume. Is that correct? Alright, so you're saying this year that it's at 425?
So I'm saying that last year, the, for the 2018-19 school year, that number was over 400. It was, 408 was the reported number that we had for the year, and I think you're right, and I think in 2013, I believe the number was somewhere between 297 and 311. I couldn't give you the exact number, but obviously, that's a significant increase.
And I don't think that the public understands the McKinney-Vento overhead that's associated with our district, and, you know, the federal government gives us a lot of money for McKinney-Vento, but it sure did obligate us to make sure that these children that are homeless are picked up, and you might want to expound more.
Sure, sure. So the McKinney-Vento Act has been, was approved by the 100th Congress, which was signed into law by Ronald Reagan in 1986, in November of 1986, and last, you know, reauthorized in December of 2015 by the administration that was in place then, and signed into law, re-signed into law by President Obama. So this has been around for a long time, and it, I think the board sometimes uses the term unfunded mandate quite a bit. The reality of it is, we are obligated to provide transportation to students who become homeless to their schools of origin, and often those students live well outside of our boundaries. And so as you're mentioning, the 70-passenger bus, there is some real inefficiency if you were to go to, say, somewhere in South Charlotte to pick somebody up with a very large bus. It's obviously much more expensive to operate that bus than it would be for a van to be able to pick a student up. Moreover, you're also going to be expanding your costs by increasing your time. The buses will be moving slower, they won't be able to drive on certain highways, whereas a van offers you more flexibility and agility.
And the van doesn't require CDO?
That's correct.
So you don't have to have a special license to drive the minivan?
No, you don't. Right, that's correct.
Just a clean driving record.
That's right.
Yeah. So one thing I would like, in this, it doesn't really talk about the overhead of the bus. I don't think we should ever lose sight of how much per mile it costs for the minivan versus the bus, because if we have to go to buses, then we're going to probably triple, triple the cost or more.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah. But, I mean, I know this, because we've done this before, but the public doesn't understand this, and I want to make sure they, this is a real gift that the state gave us, and I don't want to understate that. Because we're probably one of the only communities in the state that gets this.
We're certainly the first. We're certainly the first. I'm not sure if other districts have come on after us.
Two years ago, I was led to believe that we were at a state McKinney-Vento conference. I was led to believe that we were the only ones who were doing that two years ago. I can't say that that's changed in the last two years, but at that time, we were still the only ones.
So for whatever reason, I think we were the first district when we were approved, and as Kelly said, a lot of that was classified as state material, and we get it replaced. And then they didn't approve lots of other people, so when I'm at other, in a meeting with superintendents, it's not something that makes them very happy. So I'm not exactly sure why we were approved and others weren't, but my understanding is we're the only ones that were allowed to do that, and have been, continue to, but nobody else gets approved for it, so.
I'd just add that the efficiency piece of it is huge, you know, as, you know, we've said multiple times in presentations even this year, that the reimbursement cost from the state is based on the efficiency of our buses. So that's ridership, you know, how many students we carry. So we have 66-passenger bus, when we carry 64, our efficiency rate's a lot higher than if we carry two kids on the bus. And sometimes in McKinney-Vento routes, based on my experience, we have two students on the bus sometimes, so that actually negatively impacts our budget from the state, and it also, you know, there's a lot of other negative impacts in terms of ridership time and mileage on the bus. And I would add that this is, you know, it's a mandate that we are obligated, you know, from a, you know, just from a moral imperative that we need to transport McKinney-Vento students, but it also is unfunded from the people that mandate it. So we have to be efficient and make sure that we're making good choices with our taxpayer funds.
Mr. Walters, I just want to also comment that in the budget meeting, there was some discussion about the social, emotional well-being for the students who need to drive that distance. They're coming in what appears to be a family van, and being dropped off at school in the car line. They're not the two kids on a Cabarrus County Schools bus in South Charlotte, and having that appearance of, why are you doing that? So.
Anything else, Kelly? Are you going to continue?
No question.
Matter. For example, item five there, the activity buses, are those net two buses, or is that like a replacement of existing buses? And I mean, what I'm getting at is that, are we retiring buses, pardon me, just as an example, are we retiring some cost? Usually, the bus facility keeps old buses for parts and things of that nature, but my question boils down to, if we're adding two buses, what are we taking off of the books, either through retirement or through surplus sales? How might we be saving the county funds with the buses that these two buses might replace? But I just mean that as an example. Broadly speaking, how do we take old equipment off of the books and retire that expense and replace it with a current, in this case, a current set of buses? Maybe that's a complicated question, but it's a data question that... Maybe that's a complicated question, but it's a data question that maybe we could talk about in more detail later on. I'd like to know how we're saving on buses that we retire and when we might be replacing with current, modern, new buses.
Sure, sure. I can answer a little bit of that. I'm not sure if, yeah, take that off. So, these are definitely replacement buses. And so, when we asked last year to add three activity buses for West Cabarrus High School, that was an add to our fleet. This is a replacement cycle, so we just need to replace old buses here. And so, the honest truth about it is, it doesn't really save the county any money, but it saves the school district money. So, it's operating costs, so it costs a lot more to operate that twenty-year-old bus than it does a brand-new bus. And that's operational funds that primarily come from the state or the dollars that we get from our athletics department and our other activities, field trips, and that kind of thing. So, it's really saving us operational dollars when we replace those with, and I mean, and primarily, and so, obviously, there's always an operational savings thought, but the safety of our students is what we think about first. And when we think about having twenty-year-old vehicles that exceed the state mileage rate and having those children on those for weekend trips or night trips or whatever, that's the primary concern. Of course, when we can get an operational savings, that's positive, too. Other questions on this category?
One more that's near and dear to me, and, you know, I have my preferences, just like everyone else does. But the bus lift, I know that, you know, when I first started the Budget Committee, we were first starting to get our bus lifts purchased. What I didn't see in here is, even though you talked about increased efficiency, how many turns will they get with a lift in that bus position versus without the lift? So, you know, when you see efficiency, what is that really, do I get three buses? Can I do maintenance on three buses because I have this lift in position? And so, that means I get to go three times faster or some facsimile of speed with the lift? Or, you know, am I that much slower without the lift? And so, you know, you talked about long periods of parking time, and then, of course, the workers' comp is very real, because it does put them under additional unsafe positions. But the big thing is, is how quickly we're able to turn the bus over in the particular bay that it's in and, you know, do work on buses, because you, when you mention efficiency, we've got to know what that efficiency is. I think that would change the TRIGO score, once people understand, what does that mean, efficiency? And so, you have to be careful when you talk about efficiency. You've got to define what that means a little bit. And so, I think, you know, thirty-three thousand is such a low number. And I know that, I think, the county last year funded us with a couple of these items. It wasn't last year, it was the year before. Maybe it was two years ago. Yeah. Because they understood the efficiency of getting these buses turned around. So, that's, I would just ask Art and them to kind of put a little bit more detail into the efficiency, so the people reading it really understand what they're talking about.
So, I'll have Art present a couple of different scenarios. And so, my first question to him would be, how much faster is it to use a lift for a specific activity in the bus versus a creeper? All right? So, then, when you use a creeper, there is also the potential, you're closer to the bus, so there's potential for debris and heat and all those other things. So, there's a safety factor, as you mentioned, as well. So, I'll get in touch with him about a couple of specific scenarios, jobs, and we'll figure that out for you, give you, give some real examples from the bus garage. And then, I think that also the thing to consider, so we have fourteen bays in the bus garage, we have ten, currently have ten lifts. So, we're short four lifts if we wanted to do a one-for-one. So, I think the other question is, do we, you know, do we always need all fourteen? Or, and so, I think the question is, so do we wait for, how often do we wait, is a mechanic waiting for a lift to use it? So, I will present some of those questions to him and get some real scenarios.
Right, those are real.
Yeah.
I mean, if you have fourteen bays and fourteen lifts, can we do the work faster?
Right.
I mean, we're obviously adding buses to the fleet at a fairly quick rate, and so, and we don't necessarily have to increase our complement of people if we're able to push the buses through and we're able to utilize their time more efficiently. But if they're having to wait and that kind of thing, then we're not using their time, and they're not turning the wrenches and being focused on what they're trained to do. They're waiting.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Other questions on this area before we move along? Okay. All right. So, now, we're going into our capital outlays, capital outlay facilities department, and these are the top thirty-six items in the category of two hundred, twenty-five thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars. This document is pretty busy. There's a lot of data on it. I'm going to hit the highlights, and if you have specific questions, we'll address those. But what we decided to do several years back is to break this category into what we call as disciplines. And so, you can see the disciplines in green across the top, starting with ADA, code life, structural, those type of things, and it goes on over to mechanical and mobiles and those type of things. The concept behind that was that if, so the request here, if you look about middle of the way to the right, a five-year request is a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. And the idea that if we had, we were able to get funding for a hundred and twenty-three million dollars, we don't have the staff in our facilities department to be able to complete the projects at a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. So, with that idea, we decided to break it down into disciplines. You have certain members of the staff that are HVAC, certain members that are mechanical, those types of things. And so, by breaking the projects into more manageable areas and then aligning that with the county's ability to fund, works better for everyone. So, that's what you're seeing here. At the top, you're seeing the current year request, and then, as Mr. Schumaker and I like to talk about deferred maintenance. And so, there's a couple of years we've been tracking where if we requested it this year and we didn't get it this year, then it's a deferred maintenance. And so, all of those are rolling up to the top of that document. You can see from year to year, seventeen million, eighteen million, twenty-five million, for a total of, I believe, about sixty-one million is our current year request, because we have some significant deferrals from the previous year. And so, then you go to the next year, and you're seventeen million, about twenty million, and there goes. This document is drafted for the purpose of tracking the disciplines, tracking the requests from year to year. And at the bottom is the reconciliation. If we were able to complete a project, that came off, and you'd be able to see that in the numbers. If we added a project, you would be able to see that. If we adjusted the price for inflation, you would be able to see that. And we have all of the details in that spreadsheet. So, if you have questions, we have an answer for you. So, are there any questions about this document in summary? Okay, we'll go on.
So, I'll ask a question in layman's terms, and I apologize. If you'll educate me, please, I would greatly appreciate it. Are we saying that in that top line, what would have cost seventeen million dollars if we had purchased it in the first year, again, would have been that amount, but if we had purchased those items in the second year, it would have been eighteen million? How are we?
No, that's not what we're trying to track here. So, on that first line item, if you go back to our budget document from last year, you're going to see the same, these same projects that were requested, and then, we weren't able to get funding for them. So, we just rolled those right up. And so, if you do that one time, so you didn't get funding for it and you roll it up, and then you do that again, you didn't get funding and you roll it up, that's kind of where we are right now. We've got three years of, we didn't get funding and we rolled it up.
Of new projects and existing projects that were not?
The same projects that were there in the previous year.
Is that the cost of those projects in the year that they were proposed, or is that the current cost of those projects, if they're already enrolled?
So, we have adjusted these with a cost infle, a cost, yeah, you know what I mean? If we have adjusted them for, yes, we have indexed them. So, they are increased, yes. Okay, we'll go to the next page. Okay. So, taking that hundred and twenty-three million dollars and dropping it down to the things that are the most critical in the disciplines, twelve disciplines, three items in each discipline. And then, we ran them through the TRIGO process. We ran a risk analysis, and at the end of the day, this is how we rank them. You can see the first two items. There's an asterisk over by the points value. You can see that points value was a smaller points value, and then you get into a higher points value. And what happens there is, through the risk analysis and the TRIGO process, we decided that we couldn't live with the risk that those imposed, and we moved those up. The Budget Committee did that. So, I want you to take a look at that first list, and we'll answer any questions you have regarding that list.
I was just going to state, as a member of the Budget Committee, we were really focused on return on investment. And when you look at these rankings, if the building is going to not be used in the future, can that item be moved to another building? Is it movable, or is it just lost money? So, there were a lot of considerations there. So, for example, talking about the renovations to mobile units as opposed to buying new mobile units. The committee saw that as a valuable spend of money, because you continue to maintain that classroom with a smaller quantity of money as opposed to obtaining brand-new mobile units. So, like I said, that was, this year was probably the biggest discussion on ROI that I remember from Budget Committees.
And that's kind of where my question is. So, I'm encouraged that that was asked, because I know with the replacement of Northwest High, I'm going down this list, and I'm seeing Northwest High on there quite a bit on this list of thirty-six. And hopefully, that was discussed at length, because some of this, whether it can be replaced or taken and moved, so hopefully, that was in that discussion, whether these things can be moved, because I don't want to throw money out the window when we know that when that new school is built, a lot of that's going to be demolished, and we're going to put another building on that site. So, that was discussed.
Yeah, it was talked about, if I can, Kelly. So, from what Tim Lauter's team told us, is that A Wing from Northwest High would be demolished. It would go away, but other parts of the campus would stay and be renovated. So, that's why, if it was something like these bathroom partitions, you can see on the first slide at number eleven, the facilities maintenance staff said those can be reused. So, we said, okay, so we'll take that kind of, was it throwing money away? No, it wasn't, because that, those could easily be taken out if that part of the building is demolished. So, that was a big discussion on what can be reused, what cannot be reused, so.
Yeah, I'll just add on, as we look at our, the sequencing for our capital plan, that will certainly be taken into consideration. So, as you know, Northwest, the replacement for Northwest Cabarrus High School is number two on the list. And as we can get a more solid date from the county and how many years that is actually out, you know, we'd certainly throw that in the formula. So, if we know that something is going to take fifteen years to be, to be approved for that particular high school, but the lifespan of something is only a year, then we'll probably have to go ahead and replace it. But if it's, you know, six years, and we think we can make the six years instead of replacing it, we'll certainly take that into consideration. So, I think as the unveiling of the budget, the county budget and everything, and how they're prioritizing their dollars towards our capital plan, then we'll take all that into consideration, for sure.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, wasn't part of the capital plan when we did build the new high school, that part of the plan was to reuse the high school infrastructure of the old high school for the new middle, for the middle school, and to do some upgrades and renovations within that infrastructure before you move the students in there? So, there would be a lot of non-throwaway activities, like the fire system and those, you'd still need those anyway, so, yeah.
So, there's not a whole lot of infrastructure at Northwest that's going to stay. But for example, the easiest example is the gym. You know, that gym's, what, six or seven years old, probably? So, that whole side over there with the gymnasium would be something that would be preserved with the middle school. And they'll certainly try to figure out lots of that, but the reality is, there's, the bones of that building, in my understanding, are not all that great. So, everything you can use, you'll go around, but certainly, as again, that the gymnasium area is relatively new and can certainly be preserved with the middle school.
And educate me again on this question. I mean it just as an example. If you'll highlight or look at the item six there, the gym floor replacement at Central Cabarrus High School, no doubt in my mind that they need a new gym floor, and that's a great price for that item, and it's come up in the TRIGO process that way. But if I look at the ten-year plan, in year six, there is, there are items there about replacing Central Cabarrus and repurposing the existing Central Cabarrus facility somehow. And again, that's year six. So, and that's on the ten-year plan. But it is on, it's year six to ten, on page twenty-one of the ten-year plan. So, my question is, again, just an example, is it justifiable to build a, again, this case, just this example, to request a hundred and ninety million, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to replace a gym floor in a facility which, according to that plan, might be repurposed within a few years?
We're not repurposed. It says construct.
Just looking at the ten-year plan, this?
So, I think the easy answer is what was stated earlier. So, that was part of all the discussions, right? And, you know, we don't know exactly the year, but looking to be able to say a Central Cabarrus replacement is, you know, is a decade out at the earliest or whatever, to, that was all part of the discussion, to say, the gym floor's been there since nineteen sixty-six, and they're going to be using it for ten more years. Can it make it? So, all of that, to the extent that we could, was part of the discussion, knowing what was going to be replaced and what wasn't, and the order they were going to be done.
Okay. Other questions on this page? If not, we'll move to the next page. I think there's just about three pages of this list. Okay, take a look at this, and we'll entertain any questions you have.
How far do we usually, do we get, how far do we get down the, I'll ask the tough question. How far do we usually get down this thirty-six list? Usually?
So, the reason I started with the non-facilities, could you push your button off, please?
Okay.
Thank you. The reason we started with the non-capital facilities is because that's the easy one, and that's the only one that's easy. They're all extremely difficult from this point on. So, in this category, last year, I'm trying to get my, keep my categories correct, we did get the hundred thousand dollars for the handrails at Concord High. And I think that was about all we got in this category. We got in the greater than five hundred thousand dollars. We got some significant improvements. Now, we also got some, we did get some more in here. So, I think it was about nine hundred thousand dollars that we got in this category. The hundred thousand was the year before. So, this is the category that we struggle with a good bit. So, the county generally has identified funding sources for those items that are five hundred thousand dollars or more, because those are things that we can issue debt for. Things that are less than twenty-five thousand dollars, we have identified a funding source, a reoccurring funding source from the county, and that's worked extremely well over the last several years. And this is the category that we really struggle with, that we're trying to identify a funding source, and we haven't been very successful at that. So, to answer your question, we don't know how much money we'll get in this category, but it's certainly generally not enough.
Kelly, I was just going to add, and I think you can say for sure, that when the county has had revenues exceed expectations, on a few occasions over the past years, they've enabled us to go down this list and say, you know, I'm just going to say, we have $150,000. Looks like you can knock out several of these items for $150,000. Now, these are all bigger dollars on this page, on our page one, but we might be able to have some of that what I call special money. It's not in the next year's budget. It's really, we got lucky because they had a high revenue collection and the sales tax was greater than normal. So, I know, I appreciate those little surprises that you bring back to us sometimes.
Right, I call that low-hanging fruit. So occasionally you get, you get a couple of small projects and at the county, sometimes there's not enough money to go to the next project because it's too big, but you might be able to skip down the list and get two or three small projects. And that's, you know, that's just something that, once the revenue is determined, once the funding is determined from the county, then we'll have to make those decisions. But initially, they'll just go straight down the list, you know, one through, whatever. Specific questions on, on these projects before we move to the next page? Okay, the final page in this category, for a total of nearly $7 million. Okay, are we good to close this area and go to the next? Okay. All right. So this is our capital improvement projects, greater than $500,000 that we're going to talk about. And so in this category, we did not use the TRIGO prioritization tool because what we find here is these are things that we, many of the things, we just have no choice. These are the things that have risen to the top. For example, the mobile units. So we have a request for mobile units every year. Normally that request is more like $2 million or more. The request this year is $500,000. Since we have, are opening two schools, an elementary and a high school, we don't have as much need for mobile units, right? Because we have, we have seats and fixed assets. But we do, there are going to be some pockets where we need to move a mobile unit. Most of the time we've owned, we already own that unit. We just have to transport it, set it up, and do all the expenses related to that unit. And so that's why the, the cost is significantly less this year. And then we incorporate your, your 10-year plan that was voted on in October. So you can see the next item is the $45 million middle school. And then following that is Arbrown-McCallister. So that priority was determined by the board and you see that there. The next item on the list is security cameras and that's again, a replacement cycle type thing. If we don't spend about $650,000 on security cameras, we will not keep up and our cameras will not be valuable to us and they won't be there when we need them. And then we're starting into roofs and HVACs. These are the normal things we request on, on an annual basis and they're just very costly items. I'll give you an opportunity to take a look at that. You can see on the left-hand side, there's the year requested. The first six or seven are things that are new to this year. You can see this is the first year that we replaced them. And then where you're going to see below that is things that we requested in previous years that we were not able to get the funding for.
So I noticed your list starts at 2021 and drops to fiscal year 19, fiscal year 20, and then it ends at 2021. So the ones at the very top of the list were the most important based on, I mean, I understand the middle school and the mobiles and the land from, but after that, I don't really,
So the security cameras have to be a reoccurring item. If that is not a reoccurring item, we will not be in a good place. And so because it's more than $500,000, it has to go on this list rather than the other list that we just reviewed. So we, it's exactly what you said, these are critical items. They're, they've risen to the top. So the, even more critical than the items that were at the top last year.
Okay, explain how they got risen to the top without using a ranking system?
So mobile units, we can't open school without them.
Okay, so this is something you present to the committee and the committee says, yes, this needs to be top? Item 1 is a cabinet thing that says-
No, this is something-
Common sense that obviously we can't open a school, so it has to be first.
Right, that's exactly how we came, we came to the same conclusion you did just there. Yes, so-
But that's just for the first couple?
Right.
That's what we've got.
And so those things that are listed fiscal year 21, we, the cabinet and the leadership, based on the input from the board, from your 10-year plan, we came up with this list and said, mobile units, we can't open school without it. That's number one. The middle school, the board voted on. That's your next item, the board. The board voted on the Arbrown-McCallister, that was the very next item. Security cameras, they're reoccurring, we have to have them. They're critical to operation. The roof replacement at Beverly Hills, it is, it is so poor that when you compare it to everything else that was on the list, it is worse than any of the other schools. And so it was not on the list last year because the board had voted to temporarily vacate Beverly Hills. And so it had dropped down on the list because we did not plan on asking for money. The same kind of situation with Northwest, right? So if we're not going to use that school, we're not going to ask for money. And so we didn't ask for the money for Beverly Hills for the last couple of years. But when the board changed their decision and said, we are now going to have kids in this school, we said, this roof is worse than any other roof in our school district. So we, we have to do our due diligence and we have to take care of the children and we have to request that amount from the county because it's worse than any roof in the district. So that's how it came to the list. And same with the HVAC at Beverly Hills. So those, those items were, they're worse than anyone in the district, or they're critical to operations, or the board voted on it already. So that's how those got there. And then the ones under it are the things that were there from previous years. Other questions on that list? The first page of that list? Okay, we'll go to the next page, Dan. Okay, this is second page of your capital projects. Again, as you mentioned, the fiscal year is on the left-hand side. We've got fiscal year 19, fiscal year 20. Moving along, if you don't have any questions?
Kelly. So I just want to make sure I'm clear since I wasn't part of the couple of years back request. So when we're talking about roof replacements, so underneath those, the roof replacements for CC Griffin, Middle, Central Cabarrus High, so those just were requested fiscal year 19, right under Beth, Beverly Hills? They've not been a request prior to that?
So they actually were, so I do need to explain that. Can somebody take, yeah, thank you. So the process changed three years ago where we used to request everything in one big bucket of money from the county regardless of what financial obligation it was, if it was $25,000 or if it was $5 million. We requested in one bucket of money. Three years ago, the county said, if you have something that's over $500,000, we want to pull you into our CIP process and we want you to request it in a different bucket of money. And we said, sure, you know, we'll do whatever works for you guys. And that's when this started. So we did request them, we have requested them, it's just in this format, in this bucket of money.
And I get that. I think that's a little confusing because it looks like we just started requesting those roofs when we know they probably needed that long before those, right?
So that's where your justification document comes in handy. And so, Dan, can you flip over to the justification documents real quick? So on that justification document, it does say how many years we've requested it. And so that, that one's fine, Dan. That one's not the right category, that's fine. That's not the right category, but if you go in and pull the CIP, you're going to see the ones, see, there he's got, you'll see for each project, how long we've requested it type thing. Oh, that's the county's document. We have record of that. Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we did have to adjust it. So when we became a part of the CIP process for the county, we had to use their exact document. When we, when we're outside of that process, I modify our document so that you can see that thing. So we had to put it in a different place, but it is there, you see it?
I do. So what was CC Griffin's first year of request?
We've got 16.
16, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Got there, it was just a different way. Other questions on this category?
No, the, the only bright thing I see in needing all this maintenance is that as we build the new schools or more like replace, all of a sudden we start moving millions of dollars of deferred maintenance. So when we build Northwest Cabarrus High School, we'll gain seats and we'll take a lot of deferred maintenance off the list, so.
Arbrown-McCallister, the same way?
Yes, exactly.
Dana, I think we were on the last page there. There, okay. And so just in summary, the list totals $178 million there. And just to reiterate what we said before, in fiscal year 19, there's still $44 million of things that we requested that weren't able to be funded. And then 20, in fiscal year 20, the $46 million. And then current year, that just came on, was the $87 million for a total of $178 million.
So those will keep increasing substantially every year if it doesn't get funded, is that what we're saying?
Absolutely, yes.
And that, and that was the intent of, of what we were doing when we started talking about deferred maintenance because a lot of times, in the past, we weren't tracking it quite this way. So you never got to see the, the effects of not taking care of something or the effects of not putting money into it. So now you can begin to track from year to year to year. Here's what's happening, the mounting, how far are we getting behind on what we're doing? And, and it's, it's not a criticism, it's not anything, it's just, here's where we are. And that's all it is meant to be, is this is where we are and we want to make sure that the county always knows where we are. And then if they happen to come across a windfall, then they can help us out and know that they're making, making progress. And I think what they did was breaking projects below $500,000 really helped us get some of the little more bothersome projects out of the way. Didn't help us with the big ones, but it did help us with the little ones. And if they make some, if they get some extra money in, I say make some extra money, if they get some extra money in, then perhaps they can help us with some of these larger items, so, thank you.
Okay. So we want to do a quick review of our objectives. Just, this is the way that we prioritized all the items and the board voted on this last year and so we moved forward with it. I believe we made a couple of minor changes with the order and the weight, but overall, this is what we used. Just a reminder. Okay? And then we have definitions of those. And so we have to refer back in our Budget Committee, a lot to budget definition, budget objective definitions, to remind us so that we're on the same page and consistent with our application. This is a, just a flashback of the 2019-20 capital sequencing plan and how you, the board voted on that. And so as we mentioned, the middle school first, Arbrown-McCallister, and then the high school, and then purchasing land for Coltrane, and then on and on. But in the middle there, a total of $291.5, $291.5 million. Okay, we'll move right on. Then our next meeting is planned for, as we said, Thursday, March 26th, but we will revisit that later today. Okay? Any other questions related to budget that I can get answers for you between now and the next meeting?
Anything on there, Laura? Carol? Cindy? Am I right? Okay. Well, thank you for the time of giving us an update on the process. We'll move on to item 4.01, which is an amendment to the Athletic Training Services Agreement. And Brian Schultz, you can go from your seat.
Will do. Thank you, Chairperson Walter. So this, this item is an amendment to the Athletic Training Services Agreement. It's essentially adding an athletic trainer for West Cabarrus High School as we have at the other seven comprehensive high schools with athletics. You'll see in the terms of the contract, the amendment, that it's essentially adding another athletic trainer at the same rate, same cost as the others. And that turns out to be $11,714 per trainer, which I would say is a pretty good deal. And so you'll see the terms, it brings the contract from $82,000, the previous, well, actually this current year, to what will be $93,715 for the 2021 school year.
And just to confirm, that was the only change in the whole agreement because we don't have a redline copy, so.
That is correct.
Okay, we've got some questions, Mr. Shoemaker.
Yes. So I was looking through the amendment and then I looked at this. And then this one here spells out that there's going to be eight athletic trainers. But in the original agreement or the, in the Athletic Training Services Agreement, which was a holdover from the previous year, that only covered our seven high schools. We have an amendment that covers one more high school, but it doesn't say that it increases the number of athletic trainers. Are we increasing the number of athletic trainers? If we're not increasing it, then the $11,714 makes sense. Well, it doesn't make sense. If we are increasing it, then it's actually more like $10,000. So I was a little bit confused with the arithmetic between the two agreements. Because the original agreement was at $83,000, $82,000 even for eight trainers. The new agreement is at 92,000, $93,714. And that's how you get your $11,714 out of it. But in the $82,000 one, I have eight trainers. And my assumption is, and of course implicit in the, in the amendment is there's going to be an extra trainer added because we increased the cost. But I'm trying to figure out where the $11,714 came in because if I divide eight into $93,714, I get $11,714. But if I divide eight into $82,000, I'm getting $10,000 and change. So that's, I'm, I'm struggling with-
Huh?
$715. It's $714 and change, so, yeah. If you do it, if you do it exactly on, it's $17,000, $714.37, but y'all rounded it up to $715. When I divide this eight into $93,000?
This proposal is for an additional athletic trainer, so it would make a total of eight. And that would bring the average cost to $11,714.
But- Last year's agreement has eight. But, last year's agreement has eight, and that's not struck out. So, that's what I'm saying. The agreement that says athletic, the first one that is being penciled in with July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2020, that had eight in it. Now, you're doing an amendment, and implicit in the amendment is, I increased the cost by $11,714, but you don't state how many people were a part of that. So, I'm trying to help. Yes?
I think I know what happened, Brian. If you scroll down to this document, it's probably not a signed document, is it? It's not executed.
That was the one from the board meeting.
That's what happened, is we brought it to you guys, and we were going to go forward with the approval for eight, and we decided not to. So, if you go back and we can check the board minutes, meeting minutes, we did not sign this contract. This is not an executed contract. So, you do not have the correct copy. There is seven in the current contract for the 82,000. And if you divide that by seven, you'll get that exact amount. No?
Why would we go less than the same amount?
Sorry?
Why would we go less, seven, than the same amount?
No, you, we're not. We're going from 82,000 to 93, or whatever. So, take $82,000 and divide it by seven.
It's 11,714 dollars.
And then multiply it by eight.
Twenty-eight cents.
And multiply it by eight now.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, I...
My point is, I came up with the right answer if I used eight at the 93,714. But, when I looked at this document, it wasn't, the arithmetic wasn't working out.
It's not an executed document. You don't have the motion.
Okay. Well, I didn't know that. But, that's why I was thinking the amendment should say that we added one additional person to it, so that you match up this old document, unless the new document is going to be, have the all eight in it.
So, what are we paying for seven? 82,000 for seven, or we...
82,000 for seven, is what we're paying.
So, I have the actual signed document that there is a, there is a, and I apologize about if that's the incorrect document up there. I do have, and I'll just pass this around, I have the actual signed document that was executed on June 28th of 2019. And it does have an Exhibit A that lists each high school, all seven high schools, for the athletic trainers, at that rate of 83,000 and some change, or $82,000 even, actually. So, this is the original, I'll pass that around. And then, so the proposal is to add one additional for a total of eight for this coming school year, at the same rate per athletic trainer.
I understand now, it's just, you can see my confusion.
Mr. Chairman, can we keep this item on the schedule for consent for March 9th?
Once we see that correct.
Okay, let's do action.
We're going to do action for next week. We'll just make sure everything's correct. But anyway, the intent is to add a trainer for West Cabarrus before it opens.
Just want to make sure we say how much we appreciate the partnership we have with Atrium for that. As Mr. Schultz said before, to have athletic trainers at all of our high schools, that we pay a very small amount of what it costs to have them there. That's truly something that most places don't have. So, we're very thankful to have that, and for them to keep moving forward and adding as we build schools.
Yeah, and let me parrot what Dr. Lauder said, because when I go to the North Carolina School Board Association, and I meet with their board of directors, we're the only one in the room that has this arrangement. And so, we are very blessed. In North Carolina, you can see McKinney-Vento, we've got some leadership there, we're doing this. We're doing a lot of really good things in this county, and I think our citizens need to understand that we stand way apart in a lot of different things that we do here, so...
And perhaps for next week, we can just get the full agreement, so it does the exhibit and the eight lines up for the eight.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'll work on that with Mr. Tyson. And the amendment document, the two-pager, does, it specifies by adding the following name school to Exhibit A, which is West Cabarrus High School. So, we'll get that in writing, so that, so it's very clear that we have eight, and what specific schools we have athletic trainers assigned to.
Okay, any more questions on this one? That'll be an action item, Mindy, for next week. Okay, 4.02 was MOU with EMS training. Initially, was going to be an item, but it was that, what was it? So, we don't have any, we had some changes that we wanted to make to, is that correct?
Yeah, well, Mr. Parker pulled that and looked, wanted to add internships to that. So, and then, after adding the internships, we wanted the attorneys to look at it. So, we're just going to pull that, and we'll bring it back to you as soon as we have that ready and updated.
Okay, so that'll be next month? That's not going to...
Probably next month, unless there's some other issue. There's not a really big pressing part of that. But, yeah, as soon as we can get it back and have it all approved, we'll bring it back.
Just wanted to make sure it doesn't affect the intern opportunities for our students.
No, uh-uh.
All right, 4.03, budget amendments. Schultz?
We have several budget amendments for you today. We'll start with state. On this budget amendment, I like to call out the higher dollar amounts. You see that we did receive a $50,000 grant. It's a CTE grade expansion grant, and it's to incorporate the sixth grade into six CTE programs. Down below three-quarters of the way, you'll see the bonus pay and benefits, and those were the third grade bonuses. And so, the state was delayed in getting those dollars out, so that's the reason it didn't come with the other bonuses. Then, of course, new teacher orientation, that's just a normal allocation that we get, goes back to the start of the year, but the state is a little bit delayed on that. And then, finally, the last one there is PRCO 63, which is a special programs grant that we get. So, we request specific equipment or services or needs that children that move into the district need. And so, we were able to get that $52,000. Are there any questions on the state budget amendment?
For the 223 regarding the third grade bonus from the state, is that tied at all to reading scores, or is it allocated across the board to all third grades?
No, it's absolutely tied to reading scores, yes. Okay, other questions on state? All right. On to our local budget amendment. And so, this is just additional funds that we needed for the modernization budget. We had to do a makeshift test lab, so we're just about to go into testing, and we had to have some computers and things. And so, this is all related directly to the modernization of our payroll and HR softwares.
Can I ask one question? Is this related to the whole upgrade that you were working on with the other districts and everything?
Yes, absolutely.
And so, this is the adjustment for that upgrade?
No, this is just the equipment that we needed. So, it was, as we got into the testing phase, we understood that we needed, you know, a lab to be able to do some significant testing. And so, we were able to convert a conference room, put a lab in there, so that we can do the testing and have that right in this building, rather than having to drive across to the technology department and keep staff more efficient in their work.
So, you got this increase. Where did you get the 8,000 from?
So, and just to say, this is also money that will, once we're finished with these computers, they will just be dispersed back out into the schools. And so, this is just a fun balance allocation there.
Okay. I just needed to understand, because it just kind of magically appearing, and, all right, thanks.
Yep. And again, once we're, we have six months of them testing, they'll go back to Dane, and Dane will distribute them to the schools. Okay, one more, another one. So, we have federal dollars, and what you're seeing here is, the first one is an allocation of a school improvement grant, and then mostly, you have sales tax refund. And so, when we get the sales tax refund from the state, we have to allocate it back to our federal programs. And I think there's a second page of federal, it's really long when there's sales tax involved. Okay, and then, the final one there, the $86,000, oop, go back, that's just another special reserve dollars that we request for EC children, and we were able to get that. Okay, we'll go to the next one, Jane.
What are the nature of those contracted services?
Mostly nursing. So, this is when a student needs a nurse by their side most of the day, and that's fairly expensive. And so, we're into our capital outlay, and so, as you know, we have purchased land for the replacement of the high school. And so, this is the actual budget, so that it can reflect the payment made by the county. Okay?
So, that land is purchased?
That land is in due diligence, right? And so, it's close. It's really close. And then, finally, is our local special account, where we put our grants. And so, just a reclassification of our empower money. And I think that will do it. Right, Jane, there's no more? Okay, questions on any of those?
Okay, is everybody in agreement? All right, we'll have that on consent for next week. All right, we'll move on to 4.04, which is policy revisions for approval on first reading. Ms. Sue Burns and Brian Schultz.
All right, good evening once again. So, we have some policies ready for first read. There are two. And then, we also have several policies that have, need some feedback, that have technical updates. Thank you. There we go. Thank you. All right, so the first policy is Policy 1720-4015-7225, Discrimination, Harassment, and Bullying Complaint Procedure. So, this policy has some significant revisions. I'd like to thank Mr. Shaw for all the feedback and work in time that he put in on that. We'll say that the policy committee has reviewed this policy, as well as the others. And as a reminder, on the policy committee, we have several representatives, we have school principals, board members, I know Chairman Walter is on that committee.
Haven't been able to make it lately.
As well as David Harrison, you didn't have to confess. David Harrison and Carolyn Carpenter serve on that. So, thanks for your time on that. Several, just cross-functional department people. So, just a reminder, we have several people with various expertise. And of course, Sue Burns, who is our resident policy expert on that committee. So, I found that to be a very informative group of folks on there. So, this particular policy is, has the significant revisions. A clean copy with deletions has been provided. Revisions are intended to clarify terms and processes throughout the policy to reflect the current Cabarrus County schools' practices, as well as comply with federal regulations. So, this policy, the revisions clarify the following. So, the informal and formal complaints, the investigation and resolution processes, personnel-related complaints, including authority of supervisors and confidential information, and it clarifies the appeal processes. So, the policy committee recommends approval as written to this policy. And do you want to discuss that one, or go on to the next one? Go on to the next...
It's got significance, Mr. Shaw. Do you want to say, add anything to that?
The policy reflects a lot of revisions that really came from me. So, any questions would probably be best directed to me, because I'm probably responsible for most of the changes, though they certainly made some nice suggestions to it. One of the concepts was to clarify when something is handled informally, as opposed to formally. A lot of complaints can really be resolved if the people sit down and talk, without going through a formal complaint response, Level 1, Level 2, Level 3. That's especially true in the bullying context, not to minimize bullying, but there's a wide range of what somebody might say is bullying. Student might say, oh, Joe bullied me, and what did he do? Well, he, you know, he didn't look at me right, or something like that. Well, that's more of an informal complaint. Clearly doesn't rise to the level of bullying under law. Probably should not get to a board hearing on that. On the other hand, so, we treat those informally under this policy, but they can, the complainant can always convert it to a formal complaint if they are dissatisfied with the informal resolution. The other hand, a claim that alleges a violation of law, such as discrimination, based on race, religion, disability, et cetera, will be handled formally, unless and until the complainant agrees that it should be handled informally. Because that raises more legal concerns, it's a higher, it's a higher gravity. So, we want that to be handled through the formal process, unless, if people agree, they can be resolved informally, that's great. There was one suggestion this afternoon by Ms. Furtinbaugh, I thought was a very good one. It's on the last page, Section F, page 12 or so. I don't know if this is the same version. It's going to be Section F4.
Page 11.
Page 11, okay, scroll back up. You see the last sentence, it says, "Should the complainant choose to be represented by an attorney at a board hearing, the complainant shall notify school officials in advance so that an attorney for the administration may also be present." And raises the question, well, how much time in advance? Well, your Board Policy 2500 for appeals addresses that. And it says, "Any individual intending to be represented by legal counsel must notify the superintendent at least two full workdays in advance of the hearing, so that it can be determined whether the administration or board needed an attorney." I would suggest we take that identical sentence from Policy 2500, put it into this policy, then they match, and the complainant or the parent doesn't have to go back to 2500 to figure out what the timeline is.
Yeah, that was really just my goal, to make sure it's consistent, because we had a policy in the last few months that addressed that timing. So, I wanted to make sure we didn't miss the opportunity here.
Yeah, I'd say in 2500 as well, that it does mention that, due to time constraints, I'm paraphrasing, that it may have, we may need to actually reschedule, because sometimes two days in advance is not enough to notify an additional attorney and have them represent the school board or superintendent.
So, just to clarify that, I would suggest then adding those last two sentences from 2500 to replace this one sentence.
Okay, so there's a recommendation, add some language to this policy. Is that okay with everybody, to do that? And just, okay, so, just add the language, put it on action, so we can at least review it one more time?
Yeah, because it's not really new language for the board, it repeats what language is already existing in Policy 2500. It's not a major change.
Dave?
For example, this page refers to the complainant, but on the first page, we were talking about the alleged victim. Can we get that language consistent all the way through? If the alleged victim has multiple terms all the way through the document, it seems that that should be made more consistent, as well as the alleged perpetrator. Whatever phrasing we're using here, as opposed to several different phrases.
I think complainant works, the, for these types of policies, you can have two types of complaints. Actually, the policy says a complaint is by someone who feels that he or she is the victim. Okay? But, a report could be someone else. I have noticed Suzie is being bullied by Jimmy. That's a report, because it's a third person. Or, a teacher notices something, makes a report. It becomes a complaint then, when it's the individual who is the alleged victim. But, if there's a report... But if there's a report by a third party, it's gonna be investigated, but it's not part of the formal process until the victim actually himself or herself makes a claim. And that would be a complaint or a complainant, so I think it works. It only gets to the board if it's a complaint, and there would be a complainant.
And I think there's the circumstance, too, where a parent files the complaint, and so, you have that difference, so that's the third party filing on behalf of their child. So, that's why, because I looked back and forth on that one, David, where it needs to stay complainant here.
We call that a complaint. If it's either the student, if it's an employee, it's the employee files a complaint. If it's a student, either the student can file a complaint, or the parent can file a complaint on behalf of the student, that's still considered a, that's considered a complaint, not a third-party report. Because the parent's acting for the student, as opposed to some third-party intervening.
Does that make sense, Dave?
It does, but just to do a quick word search through here, there's not much reference to third parties. If the complainant can be a third party, I suggest that needs to be spelled out.
It doesn't say third party. In fact, I think there was actually a draft that had been circulated several months ago, I can't remember if it was this one or another one, we had a reference to third party, and that was felt to muddy the waters. So, here we basically say, a report is by someone, for example, on page two, capital B, reporting by employees or other third parties, that's a third party, who are not the, basically, who are not the victims. Yeah, scroll right up, keep on going up, the other way, right there. Reporting by employees or other third parties who are not victims of discrimination, harassment, or bullying. So, that's your report, someone who's a third party.
We often talk about policies, and sometimes we don't talk about what we call, generically, the administrative guidelines underneath, or that dovetail with a policy. Are the administrative guidelines being revised along the lines of these revisions in the policy itself?
Sue, maybe you have a better?
Sure. This policy does not have administrative guidelines that go with it. It's a fairly comprehensive policy, and we've not done administrative guidelines for this.
This policy speaks for itself.
Yes, sir.
And this is one example where it was exceptionally useful to have a big policy committee with principals sitting there. How is this actually gonna operate in your school? Does it give you the tools you need? But at the same token, does it, you know, provide enough procedure for someone who has a legitimate complaint, that they can take it as far as they need to take it, if it's significant? So, it was a balancing act, and it's good to have input from a lot of people on it.
And this is the first, this is the first read, so we'll go.
Yes, and I did want, I did want to speak to, there's not an administrative guideline, but we do have a procedure for schools that they follow when they receive a bullying complaint. So, they have specific steps that they follow. Those are in this policy, but we also have that for the schools, and they follow those guidelines.
So, now, you've got me looking at this thing through a different set of eyes. In number one, you're talking at the last sentence. He says, "An employer who does not promptly report a possible discrimination is subject to the disciplinary actions." What does that word promptly mean? And is there, is there a defined amount of time, or, you know, or, you know, is that spelled out in forty forty? I mean, I don't, I hate being wordsmithing, but I don't, I see that, and now I'm kind of left in the dark as to what you, how do you interpret that? Is there a length of time that we're talking about, as far as promptly?
I don't think that's defined. I don't, I think that was in previous language, it's not.
No, no, I know.
No, but it raises a good question. It all depends, I mean, how serious is the incident? The thing, the point being that employees should have an obligation to tell somebody soon, right away. If it's sexual molestation, it's gonna be immediate.
So, if you all will remember, oh, I'm sorry. If you'll remember the policy we brought last month, on the new mandatory reporting requirements for school employees, and it's very detailed and specific in there, so, Barry, if you look, is it seventy, he's talking about seventy-two thirty and seventy-two thirty-one, and then it goes down and talks about seventy-three ten. If you'll remember, they, the state redid all of, based on new legislation, and put the requirements in there, and, you know, as, to speak to Mr. Shaw's comment there, pretty much you have to report immediately. If someone, especially if it's a sexual offense, we have to report that immediately. If it's a harassment or a bullying, well, obviously, we want them to report it as soon as possible, but if, you know, if it's, it's hard to say that you've gotta do that within twenty-four hours, if they find out about it at four o'clock in the afternoon, or five o'clock in the afternoon. I don't know that there's a specific amount of time, it's just as soon as possible.
But the, the other policies, seventy-two thirty, and seventy-three ten, and seventy-two thirty-one, seem to speak more definitively about those things.
They do, in the very detail, and I can't remember which one of them had the very detailed language.
I didn't mean to drag us down this route.
Very, as I look at it, I don't know what I'm doing here. The first sentence says, "Any employee who has reliable information or reasonable belief must report the offense immediately." So, I think the word promptly probably refers back to immediately, as I read it now.
Can anyone?
In this policy, pardon me, in this policy, who advocates for the rights of the alleged victim and the alleged perpetrator? I mean, I know ultimately, the superintendent is responsible for all that, but in these cases, and I'm reading this to mean that initially, a complaint is fairly assessed between the victim and the perpetrator, and that neither has a leg up on the other, so to speak, for lack of a better way of putting it. But who advocates for the fair administration of the rights of the parties involved?
I have her pulling out seventy-three twelve, which is the child abuse and related threats to child safety. So, it's gonna determine, it's gonna be determined by the specific situation. If it's something that's been reported to the Department of Health and Human Services, to DHHS, or to law enforcement, there are things that we have to allow to happen there from an investigation standpoint. So, from a victim's standpoint, if we're talking about a student, we have reporting requirements that are in, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that in here, but I had Sue pull it, in the new seventy-three twelve, which is one of the policies that we talked about last month, it's up for second read. And it's very specific as to reporting that. Then, when it becomes as a victim, that's gonna depend on the outcome of their investigation as to our next steps, right? So, if it's Department of Health at the Human Services, and they have to involve law enforcement, then obviously, we're gonna get our social workers, Amy's team, involved in that, if it's a student, and it's something there. But our first obligation under the law is to report it to DHHS and law enforcement, and let them take it from there to do the investigation. Is that kinda getting to your question, or?
Or doubt.
Okay. I think seventy-three twelve is the one that's the most specific, and that's the one that's so detailed that we went through last month, that talks about our duty to report whether it's maltreatment, whether it's sexual abuse, and it talks about sharing the information with the other agencies, and then we cannot impede their investigation by investigating behind that, right? So, if it's something that, so often, if it's a teacher or an employee with a student, my first thing is, I'm gonna talk with law enforcement to say, you know, here's what the allegation is, do you wanna take the lead on this investigation? And if it's something that we've got that's credible, they're gonna take the lead on that, and I'm gonna wait, right? Because I'm not gonna do anything that would impede their investigation. And that also gets reported to DHHS, and then those agencies, I'm looking back at, those agencies then work together, law enforcement and DHHS, to determine next steps.
Respectfully, it still doesn't sound like a person has an advocate in that process initially.
school system officials, and may be represented by an attorney at a hearing before the board of education. So, at that first level, if a student is not on my parent here, they're entitled to have a parent. If the parent wants somebody to be an advocate or not an attorney, they can have that person there. Level, just at the informal, they can have, at the level, it wouldn't be the informal, but the level one, the level two, and then if it gets to a level three, they'd have the right to have an attorney. But they can have an advocate otherwise.
In the real world, a child does not know that, and in the real world, a parent does not immediately go to that reasoning. In the real world, who advocates initially for the rights fairly of both sides of a complaint?
David, can you think about some of that and present it to the committee before next month?
Thank you.
Alright, so, it's the desire of the board here on this one. Send it back to the committee, let move it forward, with the understanding it's gonna be reviewed before second read?
I think David's questions are more about the process that would not be in the policy. I think we can proceed with the policy.
But there is no administrative guideline. The process is the policy. I don't mean to dance on it.
Alright, how about, we're gonna send it back one more time.
We can move on.
Okay. Just really quickly, though, it does, there is a process in here, and part of that is interviewing the alleged victim, the alleged perpetrator, the, any people who might have knowledge of what happened. So, there are specific steps, and those are, they're in the policy, but the schools also follow those steps, and then they send back a report to us that says, "I investigated this, and these are the steps that I followed, and did it meet the criteria, and the criteria is specific," that type of thing. So, our administrators are investigating every report that comes through with no assumptions that that is helpful at all.
Do you wanna add something, Natalie?
No, I'm just trying to, I think I'd agree with what Ms. Furtinbaugh said, is that there's, there are all kinds of things going on every day at schools that are not written in the policy, and they don't have to be in the policy, they don't have to be an administrative guideline for people to investigate. Back to Mr. Shaw's example of, somebody comes forward and says, "You're looking at me funny," you know, that gets handled a certain way. It doesn't have to be in policy to be handled. So, again, you kinda want this umbrella of, make sure these things are covered, and then there, there's a myriad of ways that they get covered on a day-to-day basis.
And I would just add, too, I think the policy is intended to be, and Mr. Shaw, correct me if I'm wrong, is intended to be kinda advocate-neutral. It doesn't, we're not, we're not saying, you know, we're advocating for the victim or advocating for the perpetrator, it's a process that's neutral, but it allows for an advocate in the process.
The complainant would know the results of the investigation, the conclusion, if they don't like it, they can appeal it. So, they have that built in, then, and appeal, and they can have that, of course, as well. So, it's, it's many, many permutations on how these complaints can arise. So, you try to fill the policy that allows a fair impartial investigation, I think teachers will be very sensitive, principals will be very sensitive to allegations of bullying. I think they probably see themselves as a child's advocate, although not necessarily jumping to the conclusion that the teacher, or whoever else the other person is guilty, but they want to provide a fair process. And then, if the complainant doesn't like the decision, they can appeal it, that's the safe word as well.
It's obviously an important policy, so, do we wanna move it forward? Holly, what do you, you wanna move forward with it, or you wanna?
Yeah.
You're good, okay. Barry?
Move forward.
So, action next week, then, till you have more? Action next week for this policy. Okay, sixty-three twenty?
If we have experience, bullying is a mental problem, and we want to be able to address it. One problem is when there have been claims of bullying, and a principal might say, "This is the first time I've heard about it." And the parent might say, "Well, I've complained five times before."
Okay.
And we want to be able, this policy helps address that by getting it in writing and getting results, and we know.
And that's why we've got some very important additions to it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, can we, let's move, move on to sixty-two thirty.
Thank you. The next one is sixty-two thirty, school meal and competitive food standards. So, this is a recommended School Board Association update. It adds clarifying language regarding the sale of food and beverages between midnight and the end of the last lunch period. Adds new subsection B dot eight to clarify responsibility for compliance with limits on the sale of competitive foods. Adds new subsection B dot nine to add consequences for non-compliance with the limits of the sale of competitive foods. And I'd just say, this is probably more, it's a little bit larger, but probably more in the lines of the technical update, although it actually updates the body of the policy itself, but it's more in line with the competitive food standards. So, this is another policy that the committee has reviewed and recommends approval upon as written.
Okay, thoughts? Yes, Ms. Furtinbaugh?
On this policy, just a clarification, Mr. Schultz, between the summary, which says the last lunch period, the policy says till the end of the school day. So, I know that's just a summary, but it does say, the changes say to the end of the school day.
So, you're talking, you're talking about?
So, in your summary document?
The last lunch period, I see that.
It refers to the last lunch period, and it's, it's not, it's end of school day now?
That's, that is correct. And we'll make that change. Thank you.
Anything else on that side? On this side? Oh, I had a question, too. So, under five, you have, you've got end of school day, but then down on the last paragraph, you've got fundraising activities, now you've got the thirty minutes thing that was eliminated from the rest of the policy, but not here. Should that be eliminated as well? Item five, page two, second paragraph. So, is everything supposed to be?
Yeah, we'll double-check that and get back to you. I think it's supposed to be the end of the school day, but we will double-check that.
And then, what is the law? Does the law have to say midnight, or is it the school day? Because isn't there, aren't there people trying to sell things in the school rider line as well, at some of these elementary schools, before school starts? Donut sales, whatever, you know? Does it have to be school day, or is it midnight? I mean, what is, what is the law? Mr. Shaw?
Well, that takes three to sell a couple days.
It just seems odd that we're making a restriction prior to the school, but now we're not making a restriction after the school.
Okay, so, it's like, I had not heard about selling things in line, so was that the PTO that is delivering cookie dough, or Krispy Kreme donuts, or whatever? To the parents in the car, they're not going in the school?
Where is that?
I just wanted an example of that, what she spoke of.
Example that I've seen is, is donut sales to the car rider lines.
But it's going in the car, they're not going into the school?
It's on school property.
I think that's the difference, it's not being sold to children, it's being sold to parents, and they're picking up and taking them.
But if you're using the word "school day," then if the parents are in the car, and the students aren't going to the car, then that would be.
then that would be not associated with the school day. If the kids are in the car, then the school day is ended, and they're now on their way home. Is that true? School day is when the bell rings, is that? And then, then you go into other aspects. I mean, you go into after-school care, which is not, after-school care is not part of the school day, right?
That's correct. So we'll, we'll get clarification on the intent of the, of the morning sales, I think specifically is what you're asking about?
I'm just looking to see what the law, is it, if we're just worried about the school day? And why are we, you know, care about what happens in the middle of the night, so.
So we're really distinguishing what happens with parents in line versus what we're selling to students to eat?
As one example, I, you know, I obviously don't know all this stuff, I'm just saying.
Yeah, that would seem like that's different, as long as they're not delivering them.
Have a restriction prior, prior, prior to school, but not after school.
Yeah, but I think, I really think the intent is the sales to children. If the parents are picking up a fundraiser item like cookie dough, because that's a convenient time to pick it up, that's not selling to the child. So the child can't carry it all day in school. I think that's the difference, we're kind of missing the intent.
Anyway, we're going to, the policy committee's going to have an opportunity to discuss this one more time anyway, so. Do I have a motion to move it, or, or do something with it?
Yeah, I will say, so page one, bottom paragraph, it does specify students. So no food or beverages may be sold to students on any campus during that time period, except through the school nutrition department.
Yeah, I think it can go to consent with that clarification.
Okay, so we have a consent, we have a second?
No, I just want to make one comment.
We don't need a second, we just need a consent. Yeah, please comment.
Because I think Brian's right, that first statement says it all, that it's about what's sold to kids, not to the parents. So I think we're digging in the details a little down further, but losing sight of what that first sentence says. Right?
All right, so that's on consent, you want to move on to the next one, 3102?
Yes, the rest, the rest of the policies listed here, I believe there's 10, are only technical changes, so they're really just.
Does it say what the, does it say what those technical changes are?
Yeah, the cross-references, legal citations or references. So if you look at these actual policies, you will not, you'll see no change in the body of the policy themselves, with only the legal references, statutory references, policy references, dates, et cetera, through those 10 policies. And the policy committee has removed, has reviewed those and recommends them for approval.
Oh, we did have some questions on concussion and head injury reporting?
A question about the, the reporting of it?
Yes.
Specifically?
Well, I just wanted to see statistics, I wasn't into the, the policy.
Yeah.
I just wanted to see, you know, you, when you start reporting something, usually your, your things go up until everybody learns how to report it, and then you should see a leveling off and maybe even a down line.
Right.
I mean, we shouldn't be seeing more than 2% to 3% increase a year, or something like that, but, you know.
So I need to get confirmation from Mr. Tyson, that the representative from Northeast Medical Center is actually visiting tomorrow, visiting him tomorrow to come discuss that very thing. So we hope either in this coming weekly wrap-up or the next that we'll have some information to you.
I, I didn't have any objection to what's going on with the policies.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that all of the technical edits be moved to consent.
Okay, does everybody support that?
Yep.
Any objections? No objections, okay, that'll be on our consent agenda for next week. All right, moving along to 4.05, which is policy revisions for approval on the second reading. Now we have a number of those.
All right, so on the policies under review for the content, there was no feedback received on any of the policies. And so we just entertain questions at this point. Would you like to go through those individually, or just call them out specifically, if you have questions?
I think we've all had an opportunity to read them. Anybody have further comments on any of these? Do you want to go through the?
Consent.
Consent.
Consent. Everybody okay with that, Laura on that side? Okay, consent it is.
Thank you.
All right, 4.06, Board Meeting Calendar for 2021. And we do have a draft calendar out there for you to look at. And again, it's similar to what we're, we, we have been doing. There are a couple minor changes to it. One had to do with when the North Carolina School Board Association's annual conference was. Those dates have changed. So there's also a suggestion that we move our November dates to the 9th and the 16th. Were there other, what were the other changes? Our board planning session, back to Saturday on the 23rd of January. Okay, any other comments?
Ms. Rafferty, I want to make a, just a general suggestion. So when we have meetings that aren't following our first and second Mondays, we seem to be needing to move them a fair amount recently. So the budget meeting, I know is going to come up here in a minute. The hearings and whatnot, I'm just wondering if we ought to look at, because of that Monday sequence that we have, therefore, most of us would not have any recurring meetings on Monday evenings? You know, whether that be with your church or with other organizations? So I'm wondering if we ought to consistently look at the third Monday to have any extra meetings, such as the, the extra budget meeting, the adoption and whatnot, just as a consideration to keep in that same flow?
As we do, we do not have the hearing dates on this one, so.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, just for anything that we need to do extra, the first place we look is the third Monday. Just to consider that.
Actually, Cindy, I think that's an awesome idea. And I've, I've thought about that too.
Just to be consistent?
No, I totally agree.
Okay.
Do you want to publicize it, or just keep it open on a calendar?
Well, but that would mean moving a couple things on here, like anytime we see something that's not a Monday, so the Thursday.
I think there's only one.
March 25th.
Two, well, there's two.
Yeah, and then Thursday, June 24th.
Does moving that one on the 24th hurt us in any way, Kelly? No, okay.
So you move that to the 21st, is that what we're saying? And then the budget one, we'd move back to that Monday in the same week?
Yeah, just whatever the first Monday is, as long as it's not a holiday, spring break, you know, it's not one of those things.
First is my birthday, I would like to have my birthday out. You always do something on my birthday.
You'll be on vacation anyway, so. So I was just thinking, like I said, for simplicity's sake, so we're looking at keeping it, you know, a timeframe open. Just try not to get into any recurring activity that's on Mondays.
I like the consistency.
And that's the first day we go to for anything special.
It'd be a very good and reliable placeholder for unplanned events.
Okay.
Makes a lot of sense.
So are we okay with putting this on our consent? With those?
So first of all, are we agreeing to change those couple to Mondays? Okay.
Well, the staff tells us there's no impact to do that, so.
Right, so Mindy's going to go ahead and move back those Thursdays to Mondays of that current week, and then kind of plan on looking at hearings and so forth, being on those Mondays going forward.
Sorry, just catching up, are we talking about Thursday, the 24th also, June 24th?
Yeah.
This year, or that's coming?
Because that's different. So we can't, I can't move that one because we literally have to close out the entire books before. I'm sorry.
Statutorily.
Yeah, and, and the whole purpose of you coming to, is to approve the budget amendment so that I can get all the pennies from all the different pots of money. And if I don't wait that long, I won't be able to pick up all the money. So unfortunately, I can't move that one. Can we do the 28th?
Do that, yeah, the 28th on a Monday.
28th?
That would be the fourth, fourth Monday?
Let me look at that, probably, yeah. As long as it's done by the 30th, yes, we could do it on. Yes.
And there's still only one meeting in July, or?
Yeah, I'm guessing the holiday that year is on the 5th, for you all?
We're talking about 21 now?
Yeah. Does it be the day after July 4th?
Probably.
So move June meeting to June 28th, that Monday, you're good with that? And then we're going to move back the Thursday, March 25th to the 21st? And Mindy will make those changes at the vote next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can do that.
Okay. So with those changes, we'll look at it one more time next week. Ready to move on? Okay, so our next item would be the board member training credit. And this would be Ms. Carpenter, for Ms. Carpenter. You want to go over very quickly what you had attended, that you're looking for credit for?
Wasn't happy, let my mind, I wrote up a little thing.
Just, just an overview, not too, too many details.
Well, it was six hours, you don't want to blow-by-blow of it? Well, I'll give it as quick as I can, it was six hours, and then I'll pass this around and give y'all some reading material. Y'all can look at it. On January the 16th, I attended a six-hour training class. It was the introductory training information practices, no, excuse me, introduction to trauma information practices. The class was given by Duke University, and it was free, which I always like. It was funded in whole or partially provided by the North Carolina Division of Mental Health Development, Disabilities and Substance Abuse Services through the Federal Community Mental Health Services Block Grant. That's where the money come from. I learned many things in this class. There were, and, and many of you may not know, but there's many kinds of trauma. Did you know there are, there is the acute trauma, chronic trauma, neglect, complex trauma, and historical trauma? Did you realize that? There's more than one type of trauma. We had to, we also learned how to characterize or learn what to look for in a child when there was trauma. The class went through, we talked about the ACES, which a lot of people may be familiar with, and how it works, how children respond to trauma, and what signs looks for. Also, they gave us where to find resources and tools. It, we had a chance to interact with teachers and staff, so we had time to do that. We talked a lot about, and in those discussions, we, a lot of the teachers talked about how it was very difficult. I mean, we went through this whole book and everything, and they were talking about having the time to talk with students and try to find, you know, when they have incidents. But their time's just so limited, they're doing so many things. They have the PLCs and all those things, especially, as we all know, at the elementary level, they have very little time to do things. And so we, and like I say, it was, it, it did go over so much, but it was very, very informative. And like I say, I did learn a lot during it, and I will pass this around, you can go through it. But it was a very, very good class, and they are going to be having some more. Our chairman had asked me, anytime that I am given opportunities for training, especially free training, anything, to try to pass it along, and I have been doing that. We, we did have a safety meeting the other day, and on the bottom of our agenda, they did show some other training, and I have asked Amy Lauder to send me that, so I can pass this along to y'all. So I will pass this, so y'all can look at it, and again, it was a great training.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Carpenter? Hearing none, are we okay with consent for these training credit hours?
Consent.
Okay. Consent for next week. All right, moving on to section five. 5.01 is our audit contract for 202021. Ms. Klutz?
Yes, it's, not only is it March Madness and budget season, it's also time to enter into a contract for our audit, our annual audit. Before you, I have to apologize, as I pulled up the documents, I realized we gave you all the supporting documentation to support our decision, but we did not give you the literal contract. So we will scan that and send that to you tomorrow morning, so that you'll have the literal contract. But what we do have is documentation to support our decision. So the North Carolina Treasurer publishes all of the prices for audit contracts amongst the state agencies. And please bear with me while I'm trying to learn to work a Mac. So this is the information that's provided from the treasurer, it's got all agencies. You can see even charter school academies and, and those type, how much the contracts were, the financial statements, all of the breakdown, and the auditor who did it, and the invoice price that was paid. And so that has all of the agencies in the state. This is just school systems. And so this is all the school systems in the state, their fees for three year, and three years and an average of the prior years. And we've also included the average ADM of the districts, and who has done their audit. And then finally, to break it down a little bit further, we showed you all of the LEAs or school systems that have an ADM greater than 20,000 ADM. So these are school systems that are more like us, or significantly larger. And you can look down at the average prior three years fees, and you can kind of see where we are in position to that. And you can see, we also did the, the calculation of the average per ADM, and who is the auditor. So if you just take a look down this column, Cabarrus County Schools paid $34,000 for the last three years with an ADM of 33,000, and you can just look down that list, and you're not going to, I'm not seeing one person that paid any less, no, I'm seeing one person that paid less than this district. So Arden State School Schools at an ADM of 20,000 paid less than us.
So are these negotiated, or are these based on ADM schedules of some sort?
So they're negotiated contracts, and so we issue, these districts issue RFPs, just as we did. And so this is the, the fee that we.
We did one for like five years, wasn't it?
We did one for three years with the option to, to roll that into future years.
Okay.
So the proposed schedule, the schedule has been 34,500 for the last three years. We can roll that contract and enter another year for $35,500. $500 is just a small cost of living adjustment. And as you can see, the, the price that we are getting is extremely competitive.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to share, coming from, from the audit world, and having contracts with Big Four accounting firms on a regular basis. Audit contract prices are largely, so to your, your point about the ADM, are based on the amount of samples they have to take. So the fact that we have 42 school, or we will have 42 schools, and a central office, and, and school nutrition fund, and all those other things, all of those come into account for, by audit standards, which are nationally based, how many samples they need to take. So I would expect ours to be higher, based on the number of schools and students. Even though a student's not being audited, they generate a certain amount of work, and therefore a certain amount of samples. So that's quite a good price in comparison.
Extremely, a great price. And so that's, I just really wanted the board to see the value that we have got in the last three years. And then a $500 increase is very minimal in the arena. But if you just take a look at some of that pricing, it's obvious. And we have been extremely pleased with the auditor's good quality work. And so we're, we're going to ask the board to roll forward and renew a contract for an additional year with Anderson, Smith, and White.
And I have to think that it, the fact that your department is very organized and can efficiently provide the evidence needed, and even when they go and interview the sample of schools and whatnot, that comes into play for the audit fee. So if there were either problems with another district at some point, or they're not organized, and they're not organized.
So if there were either problems with another district at some point, or they're not organized, and their records are in disarray, then the price is going to go up, so. So thank you for saving us money.
Okay, so any comments or questions before we see this next week, and you're going to have the contract in the board docs next week?
I just had a quick-
Yes, please do.
More of an observation than anything. So they have given us a good price, but what do you think the difference is when it's a very low ADM and the numbers? I mean, I'm just kind of curious. Oh, it is. Can you not hear me? It's on. Red light on.
Kelly, I'll ask you as an aside. Okay. Did you turn that down on purpose?
Not on purpose.
So my question is, that is a good number, but I'm curious to why that same firm would charge that much or more for a system that would have a low ADM, that's a little confusing. I mean, what, to me, there's not a set standard, maybe?
It's what Cindy said. It's a lot of what the client is able to prepare and have ready, and how much staff time has to be allocated to that audit. And so unfortunately, some school staffs are not as skilled as my staff is. I have excellent staff, we prepare everything, it is on the table, ready to go, they don't have to, they sit in the room by themselves for the first full day, because they have their information overload, and they don't even have to come out and ask questions, because we give them absolutely everything that we know that they're going to ask for. And some districts just don't have that ability for various reasons, so they have to build in more staff time at the audit firm. Some CPA firms have to do journal entries, budget journal entries, things that my staff do on a daily basis. So it's really just the amount of staff time and their previous experience with that client that drives the price.
I really just ask because I know you have a lot of experience, I have a lot of experience in audits, too, because I get audited three or four times a year in my company, and they have a set standard. So if you have X employees, it's this price. I mean, it's a set way of doing it, not so much what I do versus a larger construction company, but just it's based on the number of employees. I would say that would be the same thing as like ADM, so I was just kind of curious, so just an aside question.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. We're going to move on to 5.02, Weddington Road Construction Contract, and that's for the roadwork outside of the new West Cabarrus High School. So we have Mr. Tim Louder. And Mr. Cohen, is he here, too?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. We originally took bids on this project on February 21st, we only received two bids, had to do a re-advertising according to state statutes, were able to take bids again this morning at 10:00 a.m., and still only received two bids, so we had a pretty competitive bid situation, so we're pretty proud of that. The low bidder was Lynn Thomas Construction out of Polkton, North Carolina, his total bid was $1,368,814. Currently, we have, in the project approved, funded for $1,082,500, and so therefore, we obviously exceed the amount we have available in the contract itself for $286,000. We have already discussed it with our finance director and the County, Cabarrus County's finance director, and have worked out a solution there, where we use the rest of our contingency that we have not asked for from the county, and then additional $64,814. So tonight, we're asking you to approve, one, to us to be able to award this contract once the county approves the funding, and secondly, to authorize Mr. Our chairman here to send a letter to Cabarrus County requesting those additional funds to be able to award the contract.
So typically, we would wait a week and vote on it, you're wanting us to vote on it tonight, is that what you-
If at all possible, so it is kind of a time-sensitive issue, we'd like to get them started as soon as possible, and the county said they could-
And because the county moved their schedule, they actually have a meeting scheduled for this coming Monday, correct?
Yes, sir.
Kelly, did you have a question about that?
They approve it next Monday, and the county approves it next Monday, we're still okay?
Yeah, you could wait till next Monday to approve, because the county approves it the same night, either way, it comes both sides.
You're okay.
Okay, so we are okay, then, waiting the week?
I just have a quick question, and Tim, this is more for you. I see that's going to deplete the contingency, do you think we'll have any other issues with contingency funds needed? Here, not at the end of the project yet.
No, we still have some contingency that has already been released to us that we have not depleted. So we still have a little contingency within the project that's already been released, it's part of the project itself, this is the unused contingency we have not asked for from the county. In other words, we asked for contingency earlier, it had a certain amount, we have not spent all of that amount, don't have a whole lot left in it, but we do have some contingency to help us get through.
Well, I'm a little confused, because this statement says this request will deplete the remaining available contingency money within the project. So is, are there two different contingencies? Is it separated in the-
So this is what we have to, we have at the county, and so it's held at the county, so we have not requested that, those dollars to come in, and so there is a little bit in the rock and suitable soil, is that what we call it?
Those line items that have not been depleted.
That we have requested before, that is in the project right now, he's got a small balance there, I'm not sure exactly what it is, but the 221 is something that the board has not requested from the county. So there kind of is two balances.
So that will deplete the county?
It will deplete what we have at the county.
Yes.
So we're asking for an additional $64,814 from the county to supplement this, supplement us so we can award this contract?
That's correct.
And once we award this contract, there is an itty-bitty amount in the construction of the project that is left over as a contingency for contingency in case we have something else. So we are asking for a little bit of more money, but this is related to the DOT portion, which they will eventually recover, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, it's really just to Ms. Gramsley's point, is did we feel comfortable depleting every dime of contingency that we had when the project wasn't completed? And the answer was no, we didn't feel comfortable depleting every dime of it, but those are minor, small little things, and so we have a small bucket of contingency funds that we can access, but to get this to the point where we can award it, we had to deplete all of the contingency that we had at the county level.
So moving on to the unspoken news that happened to the school, we're not liable for any of the activity that occurred that created all that damage?
No, sir, that's still, the building still belongs to the contractor, and so I met with him and his general liability folks out there today, Builders Risk Insurance Company, they were assessing the damages, and they'll work it out from there.
I just needed you to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I was also just going to say, just to remind everyone, remember, this was a significantly more expensive project when it came back in, so Tim and Brian, basically by taking that out of the contractor's hands and waiting three or four months, which is where we're at now, essentially reduced that by about half, and also will speed up when the work gets done. So yes, we have to ask for 64 more thousand dollars, but that's in the process of saving a million and a half dollars to do it the way that they're doing it, so kind of kudos to them, and make sure everybody remembers that, right?
Well, that would be a nice statement to say, because nobody else would get that, that's good, thank you.
Where's, oh, go ahead, Ms. Carpenter?
Now, will we get some of this, I mean, will some of this money come back? DOT have to pay us back?
Right, that is the general statute, the current general statute is that the DOT and the towns or the municipalities will pay, reimburse the county for those expenses, and so we're, you know, we still haven't seen that happen yet, because this is fairly-
That was my next statement, but let's not go there, because we don't know when that would actually happen, so that's not a promise we can make to the general public anyway.
So that's a general statute, so it's not the promise that we're making to the public, it's the promise that our lawmakers have made to the public, so make sure we're clear on that, it's not Kelly.
Additionally, we have worked very, very closely with DOT to find the scope specific, and had it approved all the way up to the top of the NC DOT, so that scope was approved prior to any bids coming in on it, and we did bid in accordance with all the NC DOT standards, so they would not have any reason not to reimburse the project.
Thank you.
And the plan now is, when this is done, to pretty much by the end of this month, start the project, which should be roughly a 90-day project, which should put us in good shape, correct?
Yes, sir, that's the plan.
So what is the date that we're anticipating them turning the school over to us?
If we can get this approved by the middle of March, we anticipate that they would actually have this work start on the beginning of April.
All right, but this is the roadway, the actual school being turned over to us is when?
Right now, the school being turned over to us shows April 28th, we're not sure of the contractor's schedule, so we're still negotiating that. We'll find out tomorrow morning, OAC, how much will they push it back.
So this project would end after that?
It would most likely end at or at, past that time, yes, sir.
But we don't need, the school can still open if the road doesn't get done, is that, or if the road's in process?
It could, but we don't anticipate that, we anticipate having the road finished.
Just making sure that's not a contingency opening the school issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else down on the side?
But you don't see any danger of the school not opening because of this latest hiccup, i.e. the damage that was done?
No, sir, I mean, yeah, it was quite a bit of damage, but it was just more a cleanup situation and having to continue to push forward, so tomorrow, we'll have a discussion about how much staffing they're going to put on this project to make sure it can accelerate me to schedule it, that we anticipate them doing.
Yeah, could you make sure we get that in the weekly report?
Sure.
Because everybody's asking, and I'm like, I think we're still on the schedule.
We've asked for their, you know, 100-day schedule, if you will, to make sure they understand where they need to be complete, so that schedule now has been reduced from two and a half years down to basically 100 days. How are you going to make it happen in 100 days?
Okay, is there anything else that we have questions on that would prevent us from approving this next week? Okay, so it'll be on the action for next week? And then our last item for tonight has to do with our budget work session date that was on the calendar, on the school board calendar. It looks like there might be a need to try to change that, so Chris, if you can give us, describe what we need to do.
Yeah, we had it scheduled for a Thursday, as we just said before, that is actually the state superintendent meeting, where they have asked us all to be there, it's a pretty big one. It's in Wilmington, they moved that around the state, if it was in Greensboro or Raleigh, I would just drive back for the budget meeting, but driving back from Wilmington's a little more difficult, so we were just asking, can we move that budget session, because that's, again, a pretty big meeting, and it coincides with, actually, we have a bit of our staff, we're doing a presentation when we're there, so it's just, it just doesn't work. So if it's possible to move that budget session, that would be good, because I just can't be here.
And you said you had three preferred dates?
Can we go to that prior Monday?
Monday, and what date is that?
The 23rd.
Yeah, the 23rd, I think, is what we kind of sent around in an email, but I think Mr. Walter wanted to check that with the rest of the board.
So if you can look at your calendars, see if that works.
It's good for this end.
All right. Okay, so we have the six of the seven of us. Is there any other date that the seven of us are available? I'm not available on the 17th, so that doesn't work for me. Is there any other date that you are available? David is not on the 23rd, we're just checking to see if we have, can get all seven of us, any of these other alternate dates.
I'm not available on the other two dates that were suggested.
Okay, and 23rd works best. We would need a motion to change our calendar, yes. So I'll make a motion, we set our new budget date to be Monday, March 23rd?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
And that's at 6:00.
Keeping the same time, same location?
Yep.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed?
6:00, 8:00?
Same time, same place, same place, yes. Okay, so that passes, we'll be adjusting the calendar. Okay, well, that's all we had on our agenda, we would need a motion for adjournment to end our meeting. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn, everybody in favor, say aye? Anybody opposed? Hearing none, that'll be it for tonight. Thank you again for tuning in, and remember to go vote tomorrow. Thanks.